This is a regular city council meeting of the City of Ocean Shores. It is April 8th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. The meetings are simulcast and archived on KOSW Radio. Meetings are live streamed and with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. The meeting can be viewed on cable channel 68 Thursdays at 12:00 PM and Sundays at 10:00 PM. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sires?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Gribble? Councilmember Gribble is here. Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wills?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
All right. We get approval of tonight's agenda.
Can we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Klein?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Klein.
All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, now, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda and add Police Chief report after item number four in the staff reports section.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have no ceremonies or proclamations. Announcements, board and committee vacancies. We have two vacancies on the Parks Board, two vacancies on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, four vacancies on the Fresh Waterway Advisory Committee, and one vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees. For announcements, I would like to appoint Janet Grant, James Fitzgerald, Jay Bosch, and David Royce to the Fresh Waterways Advisory Committee with council consensus. All in favor? Thank you. All right, next, there's no other reports. Public communication is next. Public communication to council is intended for communication to the city council regarding general council business or policy not on tonight's agenda. Address comments and questions to the city council body, not to an individual member or city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We request your comments to be nice and respectful. This is not a question and answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use the public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. The city council will begin the time once the citizen has started their public comment. At two minutes, you will see the green light, followed by a yellow light indicating 30 seconds remain of the public comment period. The red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be first individuals attending in person, second individuals attending remotely. The general public comment, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the usual position on the agenda. Scott, who do we have?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have 10 public comments this evening. Number one, Nancy Milliman, American history.
Good evening, everyone. In high school and college, I very much enjoyed my American history classes and was very fortunate to have excellent teachers. Recent events piqued my curiosity, so some research was to ensue, and I am able to quote sources. The word democracy is not found in any founding document. The USA is a constitutional republic, not a democracy. No American founding document, not the Declaration of Independence, Articles of Confederation, or the Constitution mentions that word. The United States is a constitutional republic, and in this system, representatives are elected by the citizens to make decisions on their behalf, and the government operates under a framework defined by the Constitution. The US also has a federal structure, meaning that power is divided between the national government and the individual states. Additionally, the US government is characterized by a system of checks and balances among the three branches of government, the executive, legislative, and judicial branches. In Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution, the term republican is used as an adjective. It says, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republic form of government." A republic government is a system where the power rests with the citizens who elected their representatives to make decisions on their behalf, instead of rather being ruled by a monarch. Thank you.
Melissa Smith, oh what tangled webs we weave when first we practice to deceive.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Ocean Shores citizens. Last year at the Sand and Sawdust Festival, a group of citizens asked for a booth to register voters. Although the venue was full, accommodations were made, and a booth was given at no cost with stipulations. The booth had to represent all sides and must remain nonpartisan. This would mean no identifying materials or clothing of party preference or affiliation. The booth must also follow voting guidelines as stating on sos.wa.gov, page six, laws and rules partisan materials. Fast forward to the first day, first shift, I arrived with another person, and we were immediately met with hostility and outrage. Mind you, neither one of us had said anything to anyone other than hello. They were angry that we were there and became quite loud and aggressive. On the table was a document titled, "Your Vote Does Count and Here's Why." The first sentence says, "You live in a democracy." On the wall was a banner, the one shown at the last council meeting, which reads, "Register to Vote: Democracy Depends on It." These phrases about democracy are recognized as political talking points against the one particular president and party. Although not noticed until later the following day, every single clipboard used had a large sticker that read indivisibles, which are known as liberals and democrats. They were told that the handout needed to be removed, and the words "Our democracy depends on it" must be rolled up, so the sign simply reads, "Register to Vote." More anger, more harsh words. I struggle to understand why such chaos and threats of litigation and ridiculous protesting over something like this is even happening. Isn't the main goal to just register voters? There's a huge difference between democracy and a constitutional republic. A democracy is a political system in which the people periodically, by majority, voted the poll to select rulers. The rulers then have absolute power by majority vote among themselves. In a constitutional republic, the people also, by majority vote amongst themselves, select rulers who make laws. However, the rulers cannot make any laws they please because the Constitution severely restricts their lawmaking power. The ideal of a democracy is universal equality. The ideal of a constitutional republic is individual liberty. Great strides have been made towards the goal of subverting a republic and transforming it into a democracy. The subverter's foremost tactic is subversion of language by calling America a democracy until people thoughtlessly accept and use the term. Totalitarians have obscured the real meaning of American principles of government. Writers of the Constitution were anxious to safeguard liberty against dictatorship or monarchy, as they called it. But their chief anxiety was to protect the country against democracy. John Adams said, "Democracy will end all, contend all..." I didn't even see it.
Sherri Dooley, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. I had the opportunity on Saturday to work with a great group of people in cleaning up our city flower beds. We worked at the front gates weeding and getting them ready for new flowers and getting some trash picked up. We had some time left over, so we headed over to Ocean Shores Boulevard and weeded the raised pots over there. So it was a beautiful thing. We cleaned up our city, made it presentable. I'm just sad that it got ugly later that day. Thank you.
Denny Lawrence, Coast Communications Plant Upgrade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and citizens. Last week, the owner of Coast Communications, who will be at the next city council meeting, and I met with the mayor, city administrator, and city clerk regarding Hyper Fiber coming to Ocean Shores. Each year, I prepare an annual capital improvement budget, and I propose this budget to the owner. I had proposed a complete fiber optic node upgrade this year, but the owner suggested a phased-in approach to spread out the capital expense. Thanks to the mayor, my original proposal was not only approved but expanded. The upgrade will utilize our existing fiber infrastructure. All fiber nodes and amplifiers will be upgraded this year. This work will not require any trenching or disturbances to the city right-of-way, unlike Hyper Fiber, who will be digging up the right-of-way in all underground serviced areas. The utility right-of-way in Ocean Shores is very crowded with existing utilities, including Coast, CenturyLink, Grays Harbor PUD, and the city water, sewer, and storm drain systems. Adding another provider in that crowded space will inevitably cause damage to some of the existing utilities. We do have local staff and on-call technicians to respond to the inevitable dig-up of our customer services that will be impacted. When our upgrade is complete, internet speeds will be increased once again, and the data caps will be removed, providing unlimited data usage, all without raising our internet pricing. True, our internet pricing is higher than those that provide internet-only services with remote customer support. Let me explain why this is. Coast Communication maintains a local office with 15 dedicated employees. Our office expenses include power bills, city utility bills, property taxes, building maintenance, and mortgage expenses, all of which are not reflected in the proposal from Hyper Fiber or provided by any other internet provider such as Verizon, T-Mobile, or Starlink. Hyper Fiber mentioned hiring local, but I doubt they will be employing anywhere close to the number of employees that Coast does, as most of their work will be done with contractors, and phone calls will be answered from a remote location, not locally. Television programming fees continue to rise every year, and we lose money providing the service. The very expensive programming fees have been partially offset by the revenue received from our internet service. Lowering our internet pricing, or if Hyper Fiber is successful in recruiting our internet customers, would result in us removing the television side of our business. Some may say that television is available by streaming. However, our customers have a median age of 65, and they enjoy just turning the TV on, grabbing the remote, and turning to their favorite channel. Streaming is too cumbersome for some, and we prefer to cater to our community. So in closing, everybody likes a new shiny toy, but I asked the city leaders, have you done your due diligence regarding Hyper Fiber? Have you talked to the mayors or city officials in areas that they have built in? Have they lived up to their promises? Have you looked at the review from their customers? I have. Thank you.
Michael Avolio, State of Our Community.
Hi, I'm Mike Avolio, citizen of Ocean Shores. Appreciate the time to be able to speak. So, there's a lot on my mind, a lot of things I want to say. I can't say them all, and some of them I probably am in the wrong room to say them. But there's things going on in this town that blow me away. When I first moved here, I had friends here, I had family here, so we decided to retire here. I thought I was moving to Mayberry. It's anything but Mayberry, and there's parts of this town that are really ugly, and some really ugly people living here. And there's one group that continually does everything they can to form divisions between all of us. I don't think they're acting in the best interest of this community. They live on lies, they tell stories that are half-truths, and they're very disrespectful. When I saw people up here talking earlier, they were there laughing, disrespectful. And you know who you are. Other things they do that bother me are the signs they hold when they're out picketing. And they got couple members that like to hang on these signs that say, "Conservatives are Nazis." I don't like that, and you guys disgust me for doing that. I'm a conservative. I voted for Trump, and put your middle finger away, lady. And if any of you want to walk outside and call me a Nazi, I'd be more than happy for you to come out and talk to me, and we'll have that discussion out in the parking lot. So I'm not happy with the condition of the city right now and some of the people we have living here. And that's my point tonight. But the name-calling and the division has to stop. We're all here to enjoy Ocean Shores. It's a beautiful place to live, but right now, some people are dragging it down. Thank you.
Jeff Grill, Library Tax Preparers.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to thank the library, or this weekend I used the Library Tax Preparing Service to do my taxes, and it was wonderful. It's the first time I've used it. It's a free service, so two things, I'd like to thank the library for providing a room for them, or an area for them to do that. And secondly, I'd like to thank AARP for providing, I guess, the computers and the software. So I was in and out in 90 minutes, and I have a fairly complex tax return. It's a wonderful service, recommend it for anyone that's struggling to do their taxes. Thank you.
Maria Van Horn, I'm here to dispute accusations made in the City of Ocean Shores press release dated April 7th, 2025, titled Free Speech Violation Response. Over the past eight years, indivisible Ocean Shores has never distributed our or partisan materials at any voter registration booth sponsored by us. Volunteers at our booth are required not to represent any political party through their dress, speech, or literature. One indivisible Ocean Shores goal is to protect democracy, which is only successful if people register to vote. Democracy is the issue. There is no difference between the word democracy and the phrase "democracy depends on it," implied or otherwise. The issue I presented to you two weeks ago had nothing to do with volunteers from the other side joining us that weekend. There is no other side at our voter registration booth. It has been and will remain nonpartisan. Our issue, that remains our issue, was the fact that the word democracy was mandated to be covered, a clear violation of free speech. National indivisible supports and, like indivisible Ocean Shores, does not represent any political party. Indivisible Ocean Shores is not a 501(c)(3) organization or a nonprofit. Again, we have never distributed partisan materials at voter registration. We have annual contact with Grays Harbor County Auditor to receive the most current forms, rules, and regulations. We have done that for eight years. Today, I have copies of all the materials we had at our booth last June, including the guidelines for table volunteers and the clipboards. It's not possible that Sarah Logan and George Lee witnessed partisan political materials promoting indivisible Ocean Shores and expressing opposition to the former President Trump. One of the volunteers witnessed George Lee taking materials from our table. When we asked George what was taken from the table, he didn't produce anything, even though he was asked several times. If city staff was aware of partisan materials, they never asked us to remove any of them. The only restriction they enforced daily was to have us cover the phrase on our banner that reads "Democracy Depends on It." Many citizens of Ocean Shores are not standing up to allow these lies to permeate our city. The truth will not be silenced. Please stop confusing democracy with the Democratic Party. They are not the same thing. Read a civics book. I've asked for a response and not received one from two weeks ago. I would hope somebody would take my comments and make a response, or why have the box out there to be checked. Thank you for your time, and I've never called anybody in this room a Nazi.
Jan Hyatt, Good Things for Our Community.
Okay, if the clock will start, I'll introduce myself. I'm Jan Hyatt, Ocean Shores, Washington. I thank you, Mayor, Council, and all of the citizens that are here for the benefit of everyone. This comment was actually written by Kim Nichols, who is out of town and was unable to read this, so she sent a copy over and asked if I would read it for her. So these are her words, and I will be talking in her language, I believe. It says, "I am a registered independent. Full disclosure, I am also a member of the Ocean Shores Community Engagement Committee, and we are the folks who established City Market last year, established the Super Bowl event in February, and helped with National Night Out last year. Our committee was put together by Mayor Elderin in early 2024, and the five of us come from all areas of the political spectrum. That said, all five of us on the Ocean Shores Community Engagement Committee came out of the gates in agreement that we would not discuss politics or religion, and we have stuck to that 100%. The results, a high-functioning committee that truly enjoys working together to come up with events meant to bring our community together. We are also friends. Our City Market patrons are also from all areas of the political spectrum, but when they visit the market, it's all about our vibrant and beautiful community, making friends, laughing, and shopping our diverse vendors. There are so many other volunteer and diversely-staffed committees in our community, all with the sole purpose of doing good and coming together to nurture this beautiful place where we all live. So now, I have to ask, why would this indivisibles of Ocean Shores bring all of this controversy to the forefront almost a year after the event? How is this bringing our community together for the good? All I can see is a continuation of the divisiveness that destroys small towns. Indivisibles of Ocean Shores, I challenge you to put love of community over political beliefs. There is room in Ocean Shores for all of us. It's pretty amazing what can get accomplished when politics are put aside." And this is from Kim Nichols. Thank you.
Point of clarification to the city clerk, is Gina Rawlings in the room, or is she online?
She is online.
Okay, then I will proceed to Jane Shaddick, Working Together for a Better Community.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and community members. And Jan, thank you for that, because my public comment touches on a lot of what Kim said. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the significant progress our current mayor and administration have made in just a year and four months, more in fact than what we have seen in the last two mayoral terms combined. To name just a few accomplishments, the implementation of the green recycling program, the successful establishment of a walking clinic, thorough investigation into water quality concerns, and the pursuit of critical funding for essential products such as fire breaks and erosion control. This mayor and administration have been active, responsive, and focused on tangible improvements. One thing that made a strong impression on me early in the mayor's term was the creation of the Community Engagement Committee. What stood out to me was that the mayor invited citizens with vastly different political beliefs, people who had supported opposing candidates, and expressed strong opinions during a very heated election. Despite those differences, they came together, and that committee has been a great success. Their efforts have helped bring us multiple community events in the city market, things that truly bring our community together. Through regular town halls and timely informative press releases, this administration has created more opportunities for public to engage, ask questions, and stay informed on the issues that matter the most. Their actions show that community engagement is not just a slogan, it's a priority. To me, this proves that regardless of our personal views or political leanings, we can work together for the greater good. When we acknowledge each other's efforts and accomplishments while looking for common ground, we move forward. But when we focus only on criticism and division, we all lose. Let's keep striving for unity, collaboration, and better future for everyone in our community. And on a note, this is unacceptable. There are so many of us in this community that volunteer our time, work side-by-side to do things for our community, that this anger and this yelling and bickering in the crowd is just unacceptable. We need to, like Sherri and I did with other people, get side-by-side with your neighbor, get dirty, pull weeds, do whatever we can to help this community out, not criticize each other.
And point of clarification? I don't know what to do with it.
I'm being harassed. She's getting in my face. She's blocking my view.
We haven't had a public comment. We do have one. Should we take a break?
I think this means...
Let's take a break. Take a minute of break.
Thank you.
No. 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 We could just call it right now. I... 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 I...
...Boulevard and turned right. And as I was turning or going down south on Point Brown, the median was full. And while I was driving, I had my window rolled down. Then I had people shouting at me, darn near wrecked my car. And I just don't think that that's what we want to be. We don't need that. We can have a discussion. We don't need to be screaming at one another. And I so appreciate the strides that have been made in Ocean Shores at this point in time. There's so many things that are happening that, and so many volunteer opportunities. I would just like to say that if there is a need to have a permit and if they are not polite, pull the permit. I just, I don't think that that's a good image for anybody visiting. And it certainly wasn't appealing to me. And it's sad to me that I'm watching online and seeing that the entire room had to be cleared. I hope that we can make some headway with that. And again, thank you so much.
And then lastly, city clerk, putting a clarification is Don Williams online to talk now for general comment. Okay, Don Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
I hear you perfectly. Take it away, Don.
Okay, actually, I'm talking about something tonight, and I want to comment on the transportation benefit district program because it has no, it has no public comments. And I have a problem with something echoing here. As I look at this thing, I'm kind of, I have some questions that I hope, I hope the explainer will explain what this is about. And the first, the first project is called Budget Request Number One. It's for street repairs costing $46,000. And it's supposed to be, according to the Agenda Bill, 16 locations, but I only see 14 identified. So what happened to number 15 and number 16? And all, all of these projects are, are identified as, as filling in for what didn't get completed when the project was done the first time. Every one of these talk about being needed to complete the project. And I'm just wondering, why didn't we complete these projects, these 16 or 14 or 16 projects, when they were actually done? Now, the second, the second project, second request is for $209,000, and it covers two projects. One is the traffic safety activities at the elementary school. And the other one is flashing lights in the roundabout and the crosswalks. And these, these add up to $209,000. But I, but if I look at the photographs that are shown on, I think on page 26 to 27, there's actually, there's actually an additional project. And it looks as though we're going to be putting flashing lights at the intersection of Ocean Shores Boulevard and Chance, not just only at the, at the roundabout. But there's no, there's no money for that project because the roundabout states exactly that that, that amount of money is provided, and that's part of the $209,000. So I'm wondering, what are we doing with these 16 or 14, or two missing projects? And also with the number two, the traffic safety projects? It looks as though the, the money for the Chance Almer and Ocean Shores Boulevard projects are not included. And he also says that a, a budget amendment is not needed. I think, doesn't this require a budget amendment? There's nothing in the budget to do this. There's money in the fund, but there's, there's never been a budget for it. So I think this really does require a budget amendment, and I'd appreciate your comments on that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Don. And that concludes public comment for this evening.
All right. Next up, we got staff report, and that'll be started by, off by our city administrator, Scott Anderson.
All right. I only have a handful of things, but one of them is particularly important. And I haven't written it out entirely because it's still sort of a work in progress. So you're just going to have to forgive me on this. But it's ironic that tomorrow, we are having a meeting in Montesano, and it's going to be about the Cascadia Subduction Zone meeting with the Department of Gray's Harbor Emergency Management and the Washington State Emergency Management Division. And it's, it's what we're going to do if there's a tsunami. And within that same time, we received a letter on April 2nd, and an official announcement was made, I believe it was later that day, that our FEMA funding for brick grant applications is going to be cut. And this means that we will not be able to apply for the 75% cost share we need from FEMA to build our tsunami tower through the brick grant process, or the money that would be allocated for a permanent berm structure. The permanent berm structure is slightly less pressing inasmuch as I believe the berm we have built will hold for some time. But this is going to mitigate our ability to, to construct a final kind of project on Marine View Drive for that. And it will absolutely freeze, at least for the time being, any movements we can make forward on the tsunami tower. I will tell you that we are going to complete the design phase. We have the money to do that. That's already in the budget, and we will probably be able to reimburse certain staff costs for the time that we have spent on this program. And we have been working on this program literally for six years. It's been obstacle after obstacle. But the city of Ocean Shores is not the only city that's impacted by this, obviously. Hoquim and Aberdeen, their, their levees are impacted by this brick grant lossage. The city of Westport and the cities of Long Beach who are trying to move forward, and their tsunami towers are likely to be going to be impacted on this. We don't know if it means this is just a freeze, or we don't know if it means that this is the end of that project altogether. I'm hoping it's the former and not the latter, but I just want to let everyone know that that's where we are. It's beyond anything that we can do at Washington State. The Washington State Department of Emergency Management has been very diligent in wanting to meet with us and try to move this forward, but their, their hands are tied by, by federal interests. So that is not going to happen. It does not, however, impact the jetty. That funding is still in place and still ready to be moved forward on. So I do not have any indications at this point or time that that jetty improvements will not take place. And then lastly, we had a public comment earlier this evening that concerned hyperfiber. I will just let people know that we have not finished all of our, we are even in the initial background of legal review for permit for right-of-way. And we will be doing more, more research on the nature of that company. But, but right now, we're literally even at the stage, no one's ready to break shovels yet, or at the stage of just determining how right-of-way would be afforded and going through legal review on that. So that really concludes my city administrator report tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Next, we have a police chief report. Our police chief, Nikki Logan.
Good evening, everybody. You're going to have to bear with me because I didn't expect to have to talk tonight. So I'm reading here, for the first time, I just finished writing this as I was on my way over here. So bear with me, please. I just wanted to say a few words about a couple important subjects that affect our community. The first one is regarding the increasing number of organized demonstrations, protests, and rallies that have been and will be occurring in our city. I would like everyone to understand that the Ocean Shores Police Department supports the right to exercise your First Amendment right to free speech and your right to participate in peaceful protest, demonstrations, and rallies. But it is important for everybody to understand that Washington State laws may impose restrictions if you are infringing on the rights or safety of others. Here are some laws people need to be mindful of where they can cross that line between exercising their rights to engage, to engaging in criminal activity. Disorderly conduct, which is when a person uses abusive language, thereby intentionally creates the risk of assault, or intentionally disrupts any lawful assembly or meeting without lawful authority, or intentionally obstructs vehicular or pedestrian traffic without lawful authority. Some examples of this would be yelling at vehicles or pedestrians, standing in any part of the road, roadway, causing traffic to slow or come to a complete stop to keep, to keep from striking you, causing vehicles to slow or stop to talk to you where it causes other vehicles to slow or go around them, allowing your signs to lean or be thrust into the roadway in front of vehicles, or standing on sidewalks, blocking it so pedestrians cannot pass or forcing them to walk around you. As far as disrupting lawful meetings, this occurs if you are causing noise or a disturbance which, which is disruptive enough to prevent, prevent a meeting from conducting its official business. There are a few more laws that may be violated during a demonstration, and I listed more of them out on an announcement I posted on the Ocean Shores Police Department Facebook book page earlier today. In that post, I also, also posted a link to the ACLU page where they outlined a Know Your Rights to Protest guide. The message I want to get across is that we fully support your right to get your message out there, but we want you to respect the rights and, and above all, the safety of yourself and others while doing so. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Damon Point, and the safety, and that safety has it out there. I understand that Damon Point is an attraction for residents and tourists alike, but there are two issues going on with it that I need to address. Number one is that people are not understanding that Damon Point is becoming an island. The water has its own plans for it, and there is nothing we can do about it. There is a swift water that runs between the Quinault RV Park and Damon Point. And extreme low tides, at extreme, extreme low tides, it can be walkable. But as the tides come in, the current runs swifter and is deeper than people realize. This river is no longer walkable, and the people, and the person is trapped on the island. If they attempt to cross, it only takes a simple loss of footing for the person to be swept out into the bay. And if there is nobody there to see it happen, that person may not survive in our cold waters, and it's not likely that they even know how to swim fully clothed, leading to the worst possible scenario. There have been a couple rescues that have been, been performed out there this year, and we have had others stranded out there where we just had to have them wait until the next low tide. Whether we actually perform a rescue is dependent on a lot of things, starting from if a person or persons are in grave danger or do, danger due to illness or injuries, to looking to current and incoming weather conditions. We also watch the tide charts for when the next low tide is, to see when the water is going to be low enough to be walkable again, because it's not, it's not walkable on every low tide. Whatever the case may be, we always have to be mindful of the risk at hand. If a rescue is going to take place, it not only puts the safety of the person being rescued at risk, it also puts the safety of the rescuer at risk. We have tried reaching out to the Coast Guard to assist, but we are told that they cannot access the beach with their boats, and they only send a helicopter if the person is in dire straits. The second issue at hand is the fact that the only way Damon Point can be accessed anymore is by trespassing. Whether you're trespassing on the berm or across the Quinault RV Park property, you have, you have to willfully commit the crime of trespassing to get there. I really hope we don't have to perform a rescue again at this location. My hope is that people will not only heed the warnings of the safety risks for themselves, but also consider who else you may, may be putting at risk if you have to be rescued. We are telling everyone, do not go on Damon Point. It is not safe. And the Ocean Shores Police Department will not only be prosecuting trespassers who go out there and have to be rescued, we will be requesting restitution to be paid for all resources used to perform that rescue. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
We got council liaison reports and council committee reports. Richard, would you like to start us off?
Sure. On each Friday, I sign warrants. I attended the medical town hall on 2 April 25, and what became very obvious at that town hall is the communication disconnect between the hospital and, and Ocean Shores community. And, and both Tom, Tom Jensen and Mary Eldwin have immediately jumped on fixing that communication gap. So, so thank you for that. I also attended the agenda setting meeting on 27 March, and I attended the finance committee meeting also on 27 March. At the finance committee, the highlights were reviewed financials. We talked about a budget line item cleanup project that the finance department is currently undergoing, and upcoming reports, one of those upcoming reports is a cost allocation report being prepared by our CPA Tara Dunford, which should be ready to present to the council soon. I don't know the exact date. I met with Mayor Eldwin on 31 March, and the April 7 advisory, Water Advisory Committee did not have a quorum. That meeting, I think, was yesterday. So that was canceled, but we just appointed four new members to that committee, or that, and so I anticipate we, they may have an advisory, Water Advisory Board meeting later this month. I'll be eager to attend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Richard. Denise?
Yeah, I attended the finance committee with Richard and Allison. He already gave a summary of that. I also attended the town hall with Harbor Regional Health, and thank you to Mayor Eldwin for, for getting on that miscommunication and getting resolution right away. I attended a community meeting along with several of our citizens for a question and answer session with Commissioner Vicki Rains and Sam Kim. And I have Public Works upcoming on Thursday, April 17.
All right. Thank you. Lisa Scott.
End of the month, it's usually pretty quiet for me. I had agenda setting, and that's it.
All right. Tom.
I was at the talk with the hospital the other night, and was there, listened to everybody's comments, and it did wake up a lot of people about the, I think, this misunderstanding because of new person added to the team. But I think we can get that going again. So I think Frank's got that handled as he does. My other ones are not due until later in the month, so I'll have something after that.
All right. Rich?
I attended the gender review and then enjoyed reading the report from Kim Lee Horn on our street management plan. I don't know how many council members peruse that. My research, after looking at the report, was pretty simple. I walked outside my door and took about a three-mile walk. And I'm, in, in all sincerity, I'm, I'm going to question the report. For example, East Ocean Shores Boulevard, they said it's in good shape or satisfactory shape, which is the two highest marks. And there's two areas of that road that probably would be considered poor or very poor. And so if, if the metrics that they're using score something that, for a lot of the neighbors, is really bad, I'm wondering what the rest of the report, how, how good the rest of the report is. So as we work through it, we're really going to need those people that prepared the report to talk to us about why they would judge certain roads in first or second position when most people think they're pretty bad. So, sorry, but that was eye-opening.
All right. Thanks. Lisa Gribel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
All right. Thanks. All right. Consent agenda. We get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. We've got Transportation District Special Meeting. So we will recess the regular meeting at 6:58. And convene to a special meeting of the Transportation District. This will be presented by our Transportation District Board Secretary, Sarah Logan, and... Oh, there she is.
Good evening, Council. So we talked about, everything was during the budget time, and we had talked about the underutilization of the Transportation Benefit District Fund. Just to what Mr. Williams said, this does require a budget amendment, which it's just a budget amendment saying that we can use it, and it'll come forward at the next council meeting, Budget Amendment Number One. So this will be a request of the Transportation Benefit District Board Number One. That's you guys. For anybody that doesn't know, there are the board and the council, so it's, it's an odd thing, but they approved it this way. So we're, we're asking for a budget request, which we haven't done, I believe, since 2020. We haven't used this money appropriately, and we're sitting at about 2.3 million without financials this year. So, so what we did, and, and we spoke a little bit about this at the last meeting, is that we went to the Public Works Department and specifically the street crew, because last year, we did some work that came out of the general fund, and it could have, it could have come out of the Transportation Benefit District had we known earlier or done things appropriately. So we said, hey, let's start putting things under that fund as soon as you find reasonable that you can do it. So as you can see, and, and 40, whatever it is, 46,000, 46,000 is the high quote that we received for all of these cutouts. And, and I had Alex's help. Alex is the street department crew chief, and he put out a map, and, and there is 14, there is 16 spots, but 14. And the reason being is because the rules with Transportation Benefit District is that if the project goes over 20% of what you asked, you have to bring the whole thing back before you do any of the work. So opposed to asking for two less, we did a markup so that we could get the work done without having to come back. Next to each one of these addresses, you'll see descriptions of what they're doing, and they vary between, you know, emergency water main breaks that we had to take the road or open the road. They had cracks where right underneath of it was a huge log. So in order to take care of that crack, they actually have to open up the road and redo it. And so instead of asking, because the street fund, as the community knows and council knows, is paid for out of the general fund, except for 10%, which we get from a gas tax. So opposed to utilizing more of the general fund, we wanted to see all of this work that will get them through the next few months come out of that Transportation Benefit District Fund. So is there anything on that one before we move to the secondary request? Go ahead.
So if I'm to understand, you've asked for 16 things. You have 14 committed ones now. That leaves you room for two more, as long as the budget still stays within that 46,000.
Correct. And, and, and to be honest, it was a little bit too under the fire, trying to get something here, get a reasonable quote for it, but, but be realistic to the workload that they could get done. So it kind of covers those bases. But if, again, if we, if we get a quote for the whole thing, and we're out the door, and it's 20% above that 46,000, we're coming back either way.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right. Thank you, Sarah.
So budget request number two on this, and this is where I think probably the mayor will speak more to it. We have the ability under the RCW, which dictates the uses of TBD funds when it's adopted by a municipality. It does do for traffic safety and these kinds of things. And so this one was a little outside the scope of what we've done in the past. So we did reach out to MRSC and make sure that something like this was allowable under these TBD funds. And I'll, I'll let the mayor speak to the project because him and our project manager worked on that together. But just so you're aware, the framework of what the mayor will state has been vetted through MRSC and is an affordable act under TBD.
All right. What we want to do is we want to put blinking lights 20 miles an hour, put new lights in at the elementary school. We feel that's a big safety issue for the children. And also, people have, could get tickets for going over 20 miles an hour. And there's just a little sign on the post saying, these are the hours that you have to drive 20 miles an hour. So we want to put that blinking light in there at the elementary school for children's safety, and we want to do the same at the high school and put that up there so people will get a warning to slow down at certain times when kids are walking to and from school or at lunchtime, they're headed out. So that, that's the gist of what we want to do, and, and MRSC said that's fine, we could do that. And I think it's, it's needed. It's been out for quite some time.
And then the roundabout.
Oh, the roundabout. Okay, so the roundabout, I don't know how many people have had this experience, but I've stopped for somebody at the crosswalk, and they start to walk, and the car drives right by me on the other side. And so what we'd like to do, the flags were a nice donation by ACE, but they've been there for quite a while, they're faded out. We want to put blinking lights, or I should say, I guess I do, blinking lights in the pavement along the sidewalk. So that's where people's eyes are when they're going around the roundabout. So that'll flash in there and let people know that somebody's going to be walking across the crosswalk. We've got four locations for that. I think that'll be a real benefit. I, I've been worried about people getting hit. I've stopped, like I say, myself there, and people have gone right by me when I'm waiting for somebody to cross the crosswalk. This will let people know that there's somebody walking on that crosswalk, and really, your eyes are down at the road when you're going around that roundabout. They're not up high where you could have a blinking light up higher. So that's, that's the other part of that that we're going to do.
Question. Does that, does that include the intersection, the four-way intersection at Shiloh at Ocean Shores and Chance?
No, that does not.
Thank you.
Yes, Lisa?
Just a word of caution, the in-ground lights, that they're great for a while, but they are a maintenance nightmare. Just heads up on that.
Ones we've looked at are guaranteed for like 10 years, made out of stainless steel. So it's a little different product than what they've had in the past on that. Yeah, Rich?
Talk to me about the high school, 115 not being our road. That's allowed by MRSC?
Yes. The light will be on our property, the one light, the other one's across the road in the county. They, they allowed that. We, we went over that with them. And it's, like I say, I think it's sorely needed. Yes, Richard?
Just a comment. I think that's a fabulous idea, the crosswalk at the high school, not the crosswalk, the speed zone at the high school. Fabulous idea. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That is...
So because this is a Transportation Benefit District Board, it does require a motion inside of this special meeting to approve this expenditure request. Again, a budget amendment is different. We do these all the time, where this would come back at a later date for the budget amendment approval, just showing you the dollars moving to the street fund. And, but at, at this point, we would need a motion to proceed.
Yes, Lisa?
I'd like to make a motion to proceed.
I second.
All right. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We will close the special meeting of the Transportation Benefit District and reconvene to the regular council meeting at 7:07. And now we have another public hearing, so we will recess this regular public, city council meeting at 7:07. This is a public hearing before the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, to receive public testimony for or against the proposed rezone of Division 20, Block 2, Lot 0029 of Ocean Shores. This property of 972 Chemia Court, Southeast Ocean Shores, Washington, 98569, from a B1 retail commercial to a B2 general commercial. This will be presented by our city lead planner, Marshall Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, appreciate being able to present this to you tonight. Again, this is a rezone request to take a B1 lot to a B2 general commercial. And I'll just kind of give you a, a basic overview as to why a person would want to do that. In the B1 retail commercial districts, it's not allowed to have outdoor, less attractive storage, equipment, construction materials, and stuff like that stored on site outside of a building. So in, in the city of Ocean Shores, the B2 zones were designated for this type of less attractive use for outdoor storage of equipment, lumber, building materials, and those kind of things. The, the B2 use is mostly located in the south end of Ocean Shores around the around the mini storage warehouses and stuff like that. And then, there's a little bit of B2 space fairly limited in the downtown core back on Seahorse Avenue. Okay, so we'll start into the staff report of the rezone. This was submitted on December 30th, 2024. Report date was March 13th, 2025. The application for a rezone, RZ24-00004, is requested to change the zoning from a B1 retail commercial to a B2 general commercial for the purpose of staging a construction business. The applicant is Ocean Design LLC by Joseph Arpad Molnar, located at 999 Discovery Avenue Southeast. That's his address, not the address of the rezone proposal. The project description is the Arpad J. Molnar Project, parcel number 094300202900, Division Block and Lot. This is in Division 20, Block 2, and Lot 29. The site address is 972 Shemia Court, Southeast. The size of the lot is 9,909 square feet. The existing conditions, the zoning on the lot today is B1, land use, retail, commercial, and is not in the shoreline jurisdiction. The surrounding conditions, the zoning, to the north is a B2 lot. To the south is a B1 retail commercial lot. To the east is a B2 general commercial lot. To the west is a B1 retail commercial lot. Land use designations, and this is from the comprehensive plan, north, south, east, and west are all designated general commercial. The existing land uses, to the north, there's a single-family residence, B2 general commercial. To the south, there's a single-family residence, B1. To the east, there's an undeveloped lot, B2 general commercial. And to the west, there's a single-family residence, B1 retail commercial. Background, the, the property addressed at 972 Shemia Court, Southeast, is located in the southeast quadrant of the City of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is ADAC Court, roughly 200 feet north. The property is located in a B1 retail commercial zone. Public hearing notices for the rezone application, RZ240004, scheduled for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025 at 2:00 p.m. This was before the planning commission were sent to owners within 300 feet of the subject property on March 17th, 2025. The hearing information was also made available at the City of Ocean Shores website, osgov.com. The notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World Newspaper for publications in the March 15th and March 18th, 2025 editions. Staff analysis, the rezone of this property from B1 retail commercial to B2 general commercial is necessary to pretend, to, excuse me, is necessary to permit the use of a storage on the property. The property located at 972 Shemia Court, Southeast, submitted a State Environmental Policy Act or a SEPA checklist, SEPA 2500010, for the rezone to operate as a general commercial business. There were no negative comments came back from that SEPA checklist after being reviewed by the environmental agencies. The standard of review, the project proposed for rezoning, was, was reviewed per Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020, permitted uses of the B1 and OSMC 1734020, which is the B2 zone, general commercial. The B1 zone is intended for retail commercial uses and providing day-to-day goods and services. Financial, professional, personal services, commercial services are intended for this district, as well as mercantile, lodging, food, and other common goods and services. All uses and structures are to be of good appearance, well-designed, and free of hazards, nuisances, or other unattractive attributes. The B2 zone is intended for a wide variety of commercial uses, including those requiring outdoor activity, adult entertainment, and storage. Uses of a less attractive nature and requiring less visibility are intended for this district. However, no use causing any pollution, nuisance, hazard, blight, odor, or congestion will be permitted. The code analysis, this proposed project is allowable under the B2 zone. Permitted uses would be, I'm going to skip down to the area where we talk about outdoor storage. The other things that are allowed in a B1, because we're pyramid zoning, you could build a one-family, two-family, multifamily dwelling, drug, drugstores, hardware stores, and those types of things. In addition, light manufacturing, storage, equipment rental for sales, auto, truck, and recreational vehicle sales, fuel storage, repair shops, kennels, marinas, boat repair, adult entertainment businesses, and storage, and other uses, and structures of a similar and compatible nature, and onsite and offsite hazardous waste treatment, which we've never had in Ocean Shores pursuant to RCW 7105210 or its successor. The other thing, non-accessory structures in compliance with provisions of Section 175115. See accessory structures and uses as follows, residential garages, carports, private workshops, boat docks, private greenhouses, and other uses of a similar and compatible nature, all subject to 175110. And then, we go through the other standard provisions of the B2 zone. And this, this rezone application was presented to the Ocean Shores Planning Commission at the last planning commission hearing and was received in approval from the planning commission. And so, then, we bring it back to council and for approval going forward. And Mayor, if you'd like to open it up for public comment, we'll answer questions as necessary.
All right, thanks. Is, is there any public comment? I don't see any. How about the council? Any questions? Yes, Rich?
Was the planning commission's vote, was it unanimous, or was it a mixed vote approving it?
It was unanimous, I believe.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We will close this public hearing and reconvene the regular city council meeting at 7:16. We have no old business. Under new business, we have an ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing Chapter 15.15 of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code relating to ventilation and indoor air quality, and that'll be presented by our building official, Roy Simmons.
So, I'm asking to have the 15.15 code repealed. The code was put in place in 1993 from all of the moldy and poor practices of construction used in the late eighties, early nineties. The code was pulled out of the International Code Council. The attempt was done in 2003. It was successful in 2006. So, we have this specifically named in our code, and it's not a code. And so, it hasn't been a code since 2006. So, I'd like to have it removed. We, and I would also, moving forward on code that we're doing, and as I'm moving forward and cleaning up the code, I'm trying to get less specific about each individual portion of a code, because we've already adopted the IRC, the IBC, and, and all of these codes. So, that's where I'm at with this.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Council, any questions? Yes, Lisa?
I'd like to go ahead and make motion to approve the ordinance, repealing Chapter 15.15 of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code relating to ventilation and indoor air quality as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we have ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, amending the zoning classification of certain real property within Division 20, Block 2, Lot 0029 of the City of Ocean Shores. The property address is 972 Shemia Court, Southeast, Ocean Shores, Washington, 98569, from B1 to commercial, B2, general commercial. And presented by Marshall Reed, our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So, this is a, an ordinance of the City of Ocean Shores. The applicant is requesting the City of Ocean Shores consider a rezone of the property as described within the report. The proposal is to rezone the property from a B1 retail commercial to a B2 general commercial. And the mayor just gave the description of the location. On March 25th, 2025, a public hearing was conducted before the Ocean Shores Planning Commission. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. And so, and I'm bringing that before the council for consideration tonight.
All right. Any public comment on that? I see none. Council? Yes, Richard?
I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, amending the zoning classification of certain real property within Division 20, Block 02, Lot 0029 of Ocean Shores, the property of 972 Shemia Court, Southeast, Ocean Shores, Washington, 98569, from B1 retail commercial to B2 general commercial.
Second. All right, we have a second. Any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Marshall. We have no discussion, no executive session. Agenda review will be this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. via Zoom. It's council members Wills, Sires, and Taylor. We have a good of the union, or good of the, not good of the union. You know how many times I've said that? Good of the order. Go ahead, Rich.
Just kind of commenting on what Scott had said about the sad news about the brick grant. You'd mentioned that maybe we would continue to do some planning, and I'm just instinctively thinking, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't want us to spend any more money. Okay, wouldn't, okay. Just save money if it's coming out of our budget. I want to say thank you again to the Convention Center. The carpet looks great. Hopefully, this will last 20 years like the other carpet did. It's a miracle. They did a great job keeping it up, and just thank them for their hard work.
All right, thanks. Tom?
I love this part. A lot of things happened today, and I just want to say, we're humans. We make mistakes. We have our feelings, but we live in the same town. We're trying to do what's great for this town, and we need to get together. We need to work for a central cause, and I'd like to see that happen. It's, it's hard enough in this world we're living in. We need to start opening up a little bit more. Thank you.
All right, Lisa, Scott?
Thank you. It's one of the great things about living in this town is everybody has an opinion, and they're entitled to have that. With that said, I wanted to shout out to Mrs. Dooley. She hit the nail on the head. We had an amazing amount, a group of volunteers that came out to do work in the City of Ocean Shores. And we've had a lot of volunteers doing wonderful things throughout the year, whether it's the kennel or the landscaping. And we do sometimes lose sight of that. So, I just want to say thank you. It didn't go unnoticed, and it truly is appreciated.
Right, thanks. Denise?
I also wanted to thank the beautification committee. I waved as I was going by. So, thank you to, to all who, who worked doing the weeding at the front gate and, and with the pots. So, thank you to Sheri and all of the others who were working. I also wanted to acknowledge our Ocean Shores Library this week. April 6th to 12th is National Library Week. We already heard Jeff talk about the tax help at the library. I wanted to mention that almost half of our residents have library cards. We're up to 3,700, and just last month, there were fifteen, there were 1,568 people who used our meeting room at the library. So, so go libraries, and if you don't have your updated library card, it's easy to get. Thanks to all the staff there.
Right, thanks. Richard?
I have four primary things. So, first is a big shout out to, to the mayor and city administrator. They worked quickly to close that communication gap that became apparent during the hospital staff public meeting. Great job. Thanks. I think that we're going to move forward nicely on that. As everybody is probably aware, increasing tourism in Ocean Shores has, has been and remains one of my primary goals. So, marketing and advertising are separate tools that are essential to increasing tourism. The 2017 Pinnacle Report, which I had forgotten about, but recently uncovered and read through, was made available on 26 June of 2017, if you go looking for it. And it provides expert advice on both advertising and marketing. So, I invite all council members to go ahead and pull up that report and read it. If you want my yellow-marked-up copy, I'll be happy to email it to you if you ask. Otherwise, go on the, on the website and get it. The other thing I want to say, kind of on that subject, is between this year and last year, City Council provided a significant amount of LTAC dollars to the Ocean Shores Marketing Coalition, who are striving to put Ocean Shores on the map. Their first entry out of the gate, I'm, I'm trying to not talk army. Their first entry out of the gate was, was pretty poor. However, they have updated that website, and right now, I think it's fabulous. And they continue, they have some more ideas going forward on how to better showcase Ocean Shores. And what, oh, so in, in the visitoceanshores.com, all one word, visitoceanshores.com, I invite everybody to go take a look at that. They showcased virtually every venue I can think of, from hotels to the, to the freshwater system, all of the shops and gift shops and retail outlets. So, I also want to give a shout out to the Tourism Ocean Shores website, which is a similar type website. And the highlight for me of the Tourism Ocean Shores website is their section on birding. Birding is a, is a big draw for, for many people, and they come expressly here because we are on the major flyway of, of two or three bird migrations. So, so I also ask that the Ocean Shores consider a marketing-advertising discussion be put on the agenda at the next council meeting. And maybe we could create a committee that's formed to examine and establish the overall advertising and marketing goals. So, I invite that to be considered. And finally, I agree with Rich Hartman, carpeting looks fabulous. Good job.
All right, thanks, Richard. Lisa Gribble?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pass this evening.
All right. Can I get in adjourned? All right, we're adjourned.